Forum. Time is five oh three, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you everybody for coming out to the planning commission meeting tonight, starting at box, so we get a little extra time in it. Uh, let's moving right on to agenda review. Uh, I think we can leave everything pretty much where it is right now. Well, so anybody else wants to move stuff around, I would feel like we need to. Uh, moving on to comments from the chair and land use administrator. Uh, pending us having another member show up, I just wanted to remind the board that I have budget committee at six P M. Uh, we don't have another person come in. Well, we better magically get this all done in an hour. But um, right now we still have a forum of three people, so I'll be standing down here for the duration of the meeting. Uh, Ryan, do you have any comments?
Um, the only thing that if depending on how time you worked out, I finished the. Made a couple of small changes to the education chapter, so that's another one that if we wanted to try and. Uh, review everything, we still haven't had time, we could add that one to the agenda if you want to. Uh, it's the it's so minor, it's the kind of thing I just bring it up on the screen, you could look at the changes.
So it's simple, I could could see that if we have any, doesn't look like we have any online participants doing.
Yeah, so just another one that we could cross off the list.
Okay.
If we have time for it.
I might have thrown that right at the beginning, so we can just be done with it if you guys want to, or.
Why don't we stick to the agenda and let's see what happens.
Yeah.
Okay, so really nice, we get through six through ten tonight.
I think the the education one is so near completed, we'll bring it to the select board as it is anyway, so.
Okay.
Um, comments from citizens regarding items that were agenda. We can move on to that real quick. And approval of the meeting minutes for November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, but I hear a motion to approve the minutes with corrections if necessary.
So move.
I already just made the motion to approve the uh, meeting minutes with directions if necessary, do we have a second?
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't.
I'll second it then, okay, yeah. Uh, any discussion on the minutes? I gave them a quick little glance over, they seem to capture everything. Um, rather well. Do you have a chance to go over Howard, or is this first time? Well, uh, I'll favor approving the meeting minutes for uh, November, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, so if I was saying hi. Hi.
Alright.
Any opposed to if I was saying they? And any extensions?
Me, Brian.
Um, Brian, as I'm saying. Uh, so, yeah, that means we passed this, alright?
Yes.
Okay, wasn't sure just because we're missing two members, so.
Still, it's a. Still affirmative vote.
Yeah.
We don't have a rules procedure that would that says that we need to have.
Well, out of our forum, yeah, yeah, so they are approved. Uh, moving on to item number six, town plan read option, transportation revision four.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just under general light of six, there's a ten plan read option timeline. Should we just take a quick look at that before we?
Yes, we can.
I mean, I don't have any comments on it, but since it's in the packet, Ryan, you wanna just?
Yeah, I just threw it in uh, the kind of last minute, just put it on the front, so that we could look at it. Um, so the items on the left, those are the planning commission. Meetings and where the where the chapters are crossed off, that's why I'm hoping to be kind of wrapped up with the content. Of those chapters, so I have the transportation one, we haven't really gotten into that since um, it was rewritten. Um. So that one, I figure we had talked about bringing it up to the select board um, as it was. But wanted to provide opportunity to to make changes and stuff, so we'll expect to see that one on the next agenda as well. Um, and then hopefully that'll be wrapped up. Housing, I think we're pretty close on that one, utilities and facilities, I'm hoping we can get through that, that's kind of the major one for tonight. And then the P S D site sighting standards, natural scenic historic, we the inventory stuff, these are, I briefly showed it to you at the last meeting. Um, that's pretty much just content that's moved from other chapters and is in a new space, it's not a lot of new stuff. Um, so. I'll plan on attending the select board meeting next Monday to go over um, the chapters that we've uh, wrapped up. And uh, they haven't already seen, um, so this might not be the exact list that they'll see, but um, I didn't intend to. Uh, bring to them the P U C sighting standards and the natural scenic historic resources inventory, it's not really a. Planning so much as content, they've already seen it uh, when they approved the energy chapter and.
Yeah, the P U C studying standards, this is more regulatory than anything else.
Yeah, um, so anyway, that's that's the plan there, the fifteenth, uh, we can try and get through most of the chapters if they're ready. Um, and perhaps the energy chapter will be done, it it's one that we weren't planning on looking at, but um. After reading through it, um, and pulling the uh, P U C standards, um, it warranted just going through it again, I needed a little bit of. Reformatting and restructuring the way that it has the goals and recommendations and all that kind of stuff, so. We'll take a look at that one and hopefully we can have it all wrapped up. And get a meeting, a hearing warned uh, sometime of early to mid-January, that's still kind of where we're at.
Do you want some uh, another member to show up on twelve A?
Um, right, so as far as the utilities and facilities one, I think that's probably the most. Content rich, if if you were willing to show up to some basic questions.
You're thinking that's in January.
Uh.
Unless we get through it tonight.
Um, yeah, probably January, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, yeah.
But if if we get through it tonight and we're all good, then I'll just move it up.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather get it sooner rather than later and not available next Monday night, so.
I didn't wanna count on it, cause there are still some interest changes to risk, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, continuing on to the transportation chapter. This is the fourth revision on this, I noticed at the bottom we got. The six point five paid road, or paid road asset management on here, what's changed in this, Ryan?
Um, there's really nothing that's changed, so when Mike presented his, um, this is all the same. Um, I just reformatted it to look similar, um, but I didn't change any.
So it's just dramatic changes.
This is, yeah, the same thing that you saw last time, just reformatted.
I I read through this and didn't really have any questions, to me it seemed like we were there.
I think that, you know, the fact that Ray did a lot of work on this, I mean, it's pretty darn good, it's a rough draft.
Yeah. I think the one question that I have after going through the goals and and. Uh, action items, as I'm gonna start following them, um, this has policies sort of scattered throughout. And I think on a broader level, I have a question about how we wanna include policies and um. And if. If that's really the the right place to do it, a lot of the times when I see a policy in the town plan, it seems to me like. This is something that ought to be codified in some actual regulation, if we're saying that the town has a policy to do a certain thing. Maybe it should be an action item to say the town should uh, consider um. Amending the the bylaws or amending an ordinance or something to account for for that. Um, having all of these policies sort of spread throughout the plan, I think it makes it hard for the town to actually comply and know about what all the policies even are. They're all sort of just spread out in there and just wonder about. Whether policies are really the, like, we have the P U C standards, which is like, that's a real policy. Um, or it's a real regulatory mechanism in the town plan, um, but a lot of these. Things we say are policies are almost like we're creating some kind of rule that the town should be following. But it's not really regulation and it's not really um, organized in a way that town's easily able to follow it. So, looking for your feedback on how, whether we should have policies like this sort of scattered throughout the chapter, whether they should be contained in a certain place or just scrapped, or. How do you wanna, how do you see that?
I mean, my first reaction to that is if you pull the policies out and put them in separate category. Then you, so a great example of that is line seventy-one, discourage new development that relies on class four highways, well, if you stick that in a policy. Then you're gonna have to go back here to this section and say, oh, six point three four talks about class four. So I see where you're coming from, but I also think that because it's related to this, it'd be hard to pull out.
Right, so does it make sense to for using that one as an example to reframe that, instead of saying this is a policy, maybe that should be an action item? And say that the town should look at or review the regulations to discourage new development. To confirm that our regulations are actually doing that.
Yeah.
Cause I think just having it as a general policy in here doesn't really do much.
It is more of an action item than a policy anyways.
Right.
And and I feel like a lot of the policies are action item, but maybe then we need to. I'm suggesting we go through the whole town plan and change that right now, but.
Well, I think, yeah, I think it would be a pretty easy change, and then it it, I think it simplifies that whole thing where we had recommendation sections before and policy section. We're just gonna have goals and action items, and then it's really clear saying, this is the broad general goal that we're talking about, and these are the bullet points of things that the town needs to do.
Because if you look at one line, line one eighteen, it's the same thing, you could rewrite that.
Yeah, it could, in a sense, the whole town plan is a policy that actions need to comply with, so I don't know if it. If they're really, you know, serving us the way that they are. Um, so if that's the case, then maybe the next time we see this, I can uh, the goals and action items aren't. Formatted the same way in this chapter as the other one, so I could probably go through and and do that.
Do you wanna make those changes and present that as as amended tonight to the select board thing?
Yeah, and I just won't change much of the content, just the way that that is a particular thing is displayed, yeah.
About that. Okay, I I think to me, and the other thing that gives me great confidence with this is that a brave. Broke uh, formatted most of this, because I saw an earlier version of this, and this has changed significantly since Ray put his hands off. I'm just wondering if you shouldn't. Since Ray was the editor here, I'm just wondering if you shouldn't pick up the phone and call Ray and say, Ray, we talked about this in the policies, we just wanna make action items.
Yeah.
Just to be sure, so he's not at the select board meeting and all of a sudden he goes, hey, guys, what happened?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, cause when there was a could be, really something out by mistake.
I don't want him to get grumpy, I'm serious.
Too bad we couldn't just do policy slash action item and leave it at that.
I could do that too, isn't it?
That is a little messier, though.
Okay, anything else on that, that one was hoping to be pretty straightforward, and what's the, do you remember what the yellow highlighting is of that one chapter?
No.
Why that was highlighted, I don't, that's the way that it came to me, so I don't know.
I think the only thing I can remember was it was just so we would see it and talk about it, but I read through it and go, great.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's like, it's it's something that Ray uses, because I remember Ray telling me about this, and that's how they evaluate the road network, and I was like, cool.
Yeah.
I actually didn't know about this.
I will, I like that. Okay.
So, so on to item number seven, housing revision number three. Is this our clean copy for the most part?
Yeah, very near, um, I think the only, okay, there's a couple of changes, one, um.
Line fifty-nine?
Yeah, line fifty-nine, they added that, uh, we've had some discussion about how people might. Mistake this, uh, the estimates and stuff is something that we expect to have happen, so.
Yeah, I like that statement.
Review that, see if that clarifies it a little bit.
I feel like that is a really good quick disclaimer.
Yeah, I had a question on table three point one five, just above line sixty-four.
Yeah.
Uh, if we go back into this section, it talks about the um, um. For lack of better words, the vacation. Rentals, so homes that are owned by people that are full-time residents, and we acknowledge that in the other. I'm sorry, so I should have been better prepared here, okay, in table three point one two. Uh, under housing stock by usage types, I mean, is there any reason to acknowledge that in three point one five? We probably don't know the answer to that, but I'm sure there's a trend statistically that could be identified, are are we missing something here, or am I? Or?
Yeah, it's kind of like, it's a useful statistic that was initially presented and then just drops off.
Right, because you have owner occupied houses, you have rented occupied houses, but you don't have anything about the seasonal.
Yeah.
So I I don't know how important that is, I know that that three point one five is just a projection.
My question on the seasonal homes, and I don't think we're dragging this to a radical, is that going off of like a preseason, like not good for the winter or. Winter only or short term, like just.
I don't know what the definition.
Yeah.
It could be, it could be anything.
Not year round occupied.
Yes. I mean, certainly, yeah, over over um, ten years, there was a, it more than doubled.
Yeah.
It almost, uh, you know, tripled. So I I don't know, I mean, it just seems like it disappeared, and whether that's important for projections or not, I don't know.
Okay, I can see if that data is available on the housing.
I don't, I don't mean to, you know, I think we should still present it, my opinion is we ought to present it to the select board to keep it moving.
Yeah.
And we can always amend it later, because it's just to give them a heads up now, and later on when we do the final, we could say, hey, asterisk, we included. Seasonal.
Three point one five.
Three point one point five.
Yeah.
Yeah, just above the line sixty-four, Howard.
Is the basis of all of that, uh, the regional stuff, or is this coming down from the state as to what they're? Projecting for future growth?
The state hasn't, um, or the regional commission hasn't been issued their stuff from the state to to give to us, or at least it's not finalized, so this is all based on. Um, not the state, this is just the data, the data that was available.
Okay.
Um. None, non-state sources, I guess, I don't know who organized this housingdata.org, yeah.
Well, it seems like, yeah, the keys to the valley dot com report.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know who they are.
Um, so this housing data is the Vermont Housing Finance Agency.
Are you, are you referring to three point one point five, Ryan?
No, this was the point two.
Oh, sorry.
Um, let me see. Uh, just change my.
It also doesn't talk about vacant homes either.
Mm-hmm.
In the updated, but I, again.
I almost wonder if the renter occupied homes kind of encompasses it, well, no, that doesn't make sense with what we have on the globe.
Right, that's that's why I just.
Yeah.
It's not consistent.
Completely withdraw what I was about to say.
I'm kind of surprised to see a lower number of renter occupied as we go out in time, the. Increasing prices we've seen, everything else, if you're ready, you can afford it by a home, so. Or maybe rentals are gonna go up as a percentage.
Especially if we uh, have smart growth in the villages and we end up with duplexes and other things where we can have available rental housing, you would think that that would go up.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I I know these projections are just. I sometimes think someone sits around in a dark room and shove this a box around and puts numbers back.
Yeah.
I, I. I don't.
That's how I feel about statistics kind of in general. Like, they're they're only so useful.
Now, considering these are just projections, and this is quote-unquote the best guess from a certain source, this satisfies the needs for the state requirements, so correct?
Right, just, yeah, that that's that's the reason that we wanted the original questions to put us together.
Right.
Then maybe we should just move on here and.
Cause I'd love to have accurate information, but in the end, is it gonna change a lot for us?
Yes, it's it's not gonna change anything we're doing. I don't think.
Um.
Because of the.
It's out of our control anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, if the number of seasonal rentals or seasonal homeownership goes up or down.
Right.
They're still paying taxes, so what?
Exactly.
In fact, if there's a bunch at our homestead, it already be paying more tax.
There's a chapter, and it's, I guess it's not this one, but one of them talks about the data in the town plan, and one of the action items is to. Do studies and get more up-to-date data and that kind of stuff, so that might be something that's sort of covered in one of those action items.
Opens it up for future grant opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
So, that being said.
I'll withdraw my comment.
Should, yeah.
And I think then, I'm personally okay with this. Has its format. To push it onto the select board.
Yep.
Um, the goal at one fifty-five, assuming the that being struck and out of there, was that moved somewhere else, or are we just completely getting rid of that?
Um, we just got rid of it, basically, it says that we ought to follow the recommendations in the economic development chapter, and it probably doesn't need to be said, it was too misleading on itself.
Okay. I vaguely remember that from, so, thank you. Alrighty, moving on to section two forty-eight proceedings, before we go on to that. Um, since that's very tightly tied with the energy chapter, should we consider jumping down into some of the other ones that we've been working on? A little bit more before we get into revision one on something?
Um, I think that these are pretty, no, I think that, I think we should go through these in this order. Um, I don't think that there'll be many changes, um, it's kind of, it it's just the material from. Well, we've already gone over for the wireless communication stuff, all of that literally taken from the utilities, facilities chapter announced here. And then same with the energy stuff, so this, none of this is new language, um. And it it's mostly just, uh, check check it for organizational purposes, does it make sense to have it on its own, it's its own chapter? I think it cleans up the chapters where this stuff came from, um, and then I think it's sort of. It's not like it's, this information's lost somewhere in a chapter, it's it's its own thing.
Okay.
Um. I had put, um, a comment, I guess this, uh, I didn't do print. Print a PDF, I exported it as a PDF, so it didn't save my comments. Um, in the same way, but there is one online thirty-seven, um, about. Co-locating towers, although it's under the energy section, so I just caught that a last minute, it was like, I don't know if that. Um, is just misplaced or or what, but um, I think. There was some, there was some organizational stuff that I was confused about, um, related to energy, it starts with, um. On line eighty-four, eleven point two, standards for all electric generation, storage and transmission facilities. And then the next, um, is citing standards for renewable electricity facilities. And then the next one on two oh one is wind generation facilities, so I thought we had talked about doing like general standards. Solar standards and wind standards, um, but. Maybe that was never changed, those titles just seem kind of redundant to go from standards for all electric generation, storage and transmission. And then citing standards for renewable electricity facilities.
So, Mike, Mike, before we go there, I have a question on, um, supported projects.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Well, I guess it works, I I was confused, so it starts out the town supports the following types of energy and utility development. I understand residential scale renewable energy, projects that impose the minimus impact. Defined that those, that, and there's a semicolon, and then it hits a new bullet, but I'm not sure there should be a bullet there, I think. Because you have the semicolon at the end of that, and then it says involve co-location on legally existing towers, upgrades to existing equipment. Or similar modifications, so you're really talking about wireless communication there, I think.
Right.
It's just that that's just not, this whole thing is kind of. That, not making a lot of sense.
Yeah, something happened there.
Or did something jump on?
Is, that's what it seemed to me, um, cause we pull up our existing town plan and see, it's just like. Could be mistaken there. Um, energy. She goes policies. Review process, general standards.
I understand what this is saying. That if there aren't big changes, no big deal, that's really what it's saying.
Mm-hmm. I don't even see that supported section, supported project section in our existing energy chapter.
Yeah, I don't.
Maybe that, did that come from the, the towers one then?
I don't remember it in the wireless communication.
Huh.
Because I think it's what we wanna leave this in here, then I think we need to just add a word or two, cause if you know what you're, what that means. You you know that they're talking about wireless communication, but if you don't know that. You're not really sure what co-location on existing towers mean, what are you really talking about?
Yeah, well, that doesn't belong in this section anyway, which is about energy.
Yes, towers now, I mean, look what they're doing in Norway with wireless transmission of electricity now.
I mean, are they talking, so the towers could be electrical towers, um, you know, they do co-rate, co-locate wireless. So these on the electrical transmission tower.
Uh.
That that is, it hasn't happened here, but we just, you do see it around. So I think something has to, we we gotta do something with this, uh, well, uh, line thirty-four through forty. If we wanna keep it in here, because it it's true, if someone comes in with a de minimis. Project that has no impact, and we don't care if they collate on an existing tower, not making any changes, and we're in a couple more antennas, well, it's a simple application. Upgrading equipment, and they're not building a new tower, not, there's no roads or expansion, great. So we would support that, but I think we need to say that, um. I, maybe we should say on thirty-six, you have thirty-five says residential scale renewable energy projects, thirty-six, we could say wireless communication. Telecommunication projects that blah, 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 then it works, and then if you take out the bullet on thirty-seven. And thirty-eight, because after the semicolon, you would have. Impression indent that, and then it's just words, wordsmithing there, then it does work.
Okay, so you you wanna leave that in there?
Yeah, I think we ought to leave it in there, because, you know, if someone does show up with a de minimis. Uh, uh, application, that is really just bolting a couple of antennas on a tower, great, party on.
Yeah, I think those first two bullets make make sense.
But I think the.
You wanna keep the second two, though, too?
Yeah, I think, um. Or you could just say thirty-six and just change it and say wireless communication, telecommunication present post imminent impact, and. De minimis impact, period, get rid of all that other stuff.
Mm-hmm.
If it's de minimis, then it should be implied that unless I'm misreading, then you, you know, we're not adding a new tower, you're not adding a road.
Feel like this is the very time of empire town plan that I'm seeing de minimis anywhere.
Well, that's, that that'll happen in a lot of applications, so with the wireless, because it is de minimis, or, you know, or you could have subdivision application that's de minimis, because what are they doing? They're they're changing something that doesn't really impact the plan, but that language doesn't show up for it.
Something, it just should be defined de minimis, I mean, like, no increase in height, or whatever, you just.
Well, it does that by the other two sentences, so maybe we should leave that in there.
I like the first idea of just indenting it down in, putting a hyphen next to it, making it all one bullet, and just, there we go.
And then thirty-six, we should say wireless telecommunication.
Yeah.
Projects, and then that cleans that all up and it makes it very clear.
Uh, two seventy-six, you have a comment there too, Ryan?
Um, yeah.
Sorry, I jumped ahead of her, that's funny.
I think he's still editing.
Oh, okay.
I'm wondering if, uh. I think, uh. What were numbered bullets are now letters, so I'm wondering if minimize visual impact is redundant with. Protect scenic, historic and environmental natural resources.
Two, I'm sorry, two forty-six?
Uh. Two through seventy-six. Um, it's line letter F. And they're very minor comments, just saying that, uh, it could probably be shortened up, cause we kind of. Already say that we wanna protect scenic resources. Um. And same G and C are are getting at a similar point. And same G and C are are getting at a similar point.
Well, there's similar points, they still hit on to. Really important things, so the sighting of it and what it looks like.
And the color matching.
Yeah, the color.
The camouflage techniques, because if you don't have that in there, I'm worried you're getting an apple income, well, it doesn't say that in the town plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
Why are you guys asking for that?
It's still short, concise, it hits what we need to, I don't think by removing it. I mean, yeah, I'm game one line, but I don't think it's one that we might want to, I think, risk.
Hmm, okay.
What do you think, Howard?
There is a section further on talking about design standards. Um, blending with the environment camouflage techniques, things like that.
That's a really important thing for us, uh.
Yeah.
So we having it reemphasized in a couple places might not be a bad thing.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with you, Joe.
Um. There's a map at the end, the towers and ridge lines map.
Yep.
I learned that there is actually a third tower in town on the getaway campground. It doesn't show up on the state's, uh, section two forty-eight. I don't know. And maybe that's why it doesn't show up, but, uh, the the list just came in the other day, it was like, where's the third tower, and I didn't know.
I heard there's a third tower because the forest pointed, told me about it, and then I tried to look it up and I couldn't find it on the, uh. What is it been, wireless cellphone tower?
Mm-hmm, their mapper.
Have you looked at that?
Yeah, and I pulled up and it only shows those two. But you can see it from the aerial photos, the the tower on getaway campground.
That's the one down Route five, right?
Yeah.
Is it private?
Yeah, there's two on Route five, there's the one right here at Hodgins or Struggles. And then one further down. At getaway camp.
No, no, I mean, the the campground is on Route five, that's.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
So could that be a private tower though, and, uh, uh, cellular communication?
It could be, but I, um. The third one, I feel like I've seen it.
The third one's up there to state park, I wonder.
Uh. No, so well, so there's the one behind Struggles, which is north of Wilga State Park. And then this one at getaway is south of the state park, um. And. I don't, it's just sort of going in that memory, but I think I've been in there zoning parcel file and read through the permitting stuff, like. It was a public facility, it seemed like.
Yeah, it's fine.
Could be decommissioned.
Though even if it's inactive, I think we should show it. Because if we're talking about co-location or any of these kind of things, I'd rather see somebody activate that, so I then put another tower up somewhere.
Yeah, reuse the infrastructure.
Right, yeah.
So anyway.
Can you get accurate, uh, location data on that?
Yeah, yeah.
You see it's a different colored dot or something.
Yeah, you can see it, you you can see like the shadow of it, um, it's kind of, it's pretty close to the highway, if you fall, it's on the north. Northwest side of the property. Yeah, also, I'll add that to the map.
Now, curious about what it is.
Mm-hmm.
Or if it's could be like an old repeater tower or something like that.
I don't know, it probably in the application file, it probably describes what it is, is it fits down along the highway right or up on, up on the hill there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is.
Sneaky. I've never noticed that.
Neither, Brian.
Well, we learned something today.
Okay.
All right, moving on, that pretty much covers. Everything in that chapter, so moving on to natural scenery.
I just had one question.
Yeah, back up.
On their map, Brian, which I think is a terrific idea, is there any validity to just labeling? The major corridors here, just for someone that's from out of town, then. You know, like the center road, Route five, or.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, good idea.
One oh six, one thirty-one, just to give someone context here, we all know what it is, but.
Yeah. Good.
Would ninety-one? Be easy to edit the map, I hope.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm.
No, that's fine, um, good point on that, um. Good, sidebar real quick here, uh, just as a, a thought. Uh, one of the things that we did in one of the other committees was authorize, um, board member to to administrative. Um, work outside of meetings, would that be something that would be useful for us in this board? For being able to get more work done in the time period. Obviously, the administrative work would be like the editing and getting things done, but we couldn't approve it until the whole board signs off on it, would that be useful? Especially in a scenario like today where my time is kind of split between the two.
Do you mean for collaborating?
Yeah, collaboration, coming up with.
Something that wouldn't constitute a meeting or would?
Wouldn't, well, I don't know.
Two people working together on that.
I think it would constitute a meeting.
It would still be, yeah.
I was just thinking like to be able to continue to work on things and come up with it, because. I know that even with this, the three of us here, if we made substantial changes, usually we hold off until all the members of the board are here to go over it.
But if it's just two of us talking, like if I call Howard and say, Howard, I'm working on this, what do you think?
Hmm, yeah, I I don't think, but there's not, there's not a problem with that.
But if the three of us get on the phone.
Yeah, then it's a ball.
If it's just a random discussion, then it's got clear cut no problem, but if it's a, an agenda item, I don't know if that would.
But you think if it's an agenda, my my point would say, Howard, I've been thinking about this agenda, I did, and I think it's bullshit.
Yeah.
We'll be sorry.
Yeah.
That's why we like our meetings.
Um.
Three is a corner, so that would start, it would make a meeting, but two, I don't know.
I think at this point, we're pretty far along, I don't think that there's, there'll be all that much work needed to be done by four members outside of the meeting.
Like, I was thinking that it might be a useful tactic that we could use, maybe that tactic might not be the right word for it.
Well, we've not been sort of doing that with utilities and facilities chapter, you, I call you up and we talk about stuff, and then I call, I don't know, I call Howard once, and then I talk to Hank once.
Yeah, so I think we're, we've pro, we've pretty much got most of the content, we're making with small changes that I can make easily, um, and then. I talked to Stephanie who does her minutes, um, she was looking for some more work and Brendan had, uh, approved more hours for her, she said that, um. She would be willing to go through our chapters, she is like an English major or something like that, to do some editing and formatting, you know, that kind of stuff.
She's extremely good in the business.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I feel will, uh, that'll, that'll lighten my load in terms of.
The spelling of, and also the. So when we're, when we submit. The, um. Town plan back to the, in the final copy, we have to change the headings and get the spelling of wireless view correct.
Mm-hmm.
I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I don't want to be embarrassed.
Yeah.
Again.
Mm-hmm. So.
So are we saying then that we're all happy with two forty-eight here? I mean, not that the select board. Well, they really should see this, right?
Yeah, and I think it's easy enough for me to.
Well, and the energy chapter was already adopted and sent. Or did we hold that one back until we did?
It did, it did get adopted.
So, again, language hasn't changed and it's all just formatting.
Yeah.
I say we don't even need to go into revision two or three on this thing, it's ready to go.
Mm-hmm. So I'll make those minor changes, um. And then, uh, I suppose when I present stuff to the select board, I'll just have a generic, uh, title. You know, town plan update, and I will call out specifically which chapters we're gonna go over, but I can tell them that we went over this one, if they want to see it, I'll present it to them or whatever.
And maybe you should just put the word draft on anything we sent to the select board.
Yeah.
Instead of, or if you want to put a watermark on the thing and just.
Yeah.
The whole thing that says draft, so.
That, there's a write-off.
Slow draft.
All right, moving on to item number nine, town plan read option, natural historic and scenic resources inventory, revision one.
So this was my attempt to slim things down in the natural scenic resources chapter itself, where we want to talk a little bit more about. The town plan, what is the town plan for those things and get away from the listing of all the different. Um, actual physical features and, um, some of the larger context. Um, that I wanted to include, this, this chapter takes it out of that, so that is a little bit more town plan, action, uh, centric. Um, and then the, this chapter. Uh, documents all those resources that we're talking about, so in the. The body of the chapter, um. Then the, the primary natural scenic historic resource chapter, it basically just refers to those resources, um, collectively.
So where? Is the, um. Conservation commission on the scenic views, are they anywhere, they, I know they went out and looked at, and you got a whole. Trigonic pile of, um, things.
Mm-hmm.
They have, uh.
Man, that.
I worked that one.
When I do move in.
I got a cold, you're trying to help yourself down here, so maybe.
I see you go on, I'm out of here.
Um, but, yeah, but yeah, I think Howard has a, a bit of an update from the, you know, the.
I don't know who came up with the initial criteria, but there were. About eighteen, I think it was eighteen sites. Eighteen scenic corridors and six scenic vistas that we were all supposed to go out and look at. And evaluate them based on sixteen different criteria, so it turned into one hell of a project, but anyway, we've got everybody. It's brought their, their reports back in. And they put them together, here, and Bruce put them together in a grid format. And. Discussion at the last meeting. Was a couple unintended consequences, when you look at those sixteen criteria. People look at them, if you had like, uh. A view of the water, and you had, uh, woods, and you had slope, and you, you're just checking off the boxes. When you start checking off the boxes and ranking them based on that. There were a number of situations where you came up with a view that ranked really high in terms of checking all the boxes, well, when you looked at the viewer, it wasn't all that stellar. So then really, oh shit, no, so, so they're trying to go back and sort of. Figure out if each of those sixteen criteria has to be ranked, so yes, it's got a slope, but is it a five or is it a one, or you know?
That's, that's.
So it's going to require some more finessing before we come up with a defensible grid that we can put in here. And that's not going to happen in one meeting, so, um.
So the only reason I asked about that list is only to be sure there isn't anything coming in the very near future, really, already created.
Yeah, I mean. You know, it's not my decision to make, but I would. Assume that since it is going to take a while to.
So then we should just go away with it.
So, go, we've got here, get the thing adopted, and we can come back and add these things in later, because it just.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, it's going to drag us out into February before we're done with it.
Yeah, and Bruce was asking me about timeline, um.
Right.
And I said, and I had told him that from, from the beginning, my assumption was it wasn't going to be done in time, and we weren't able to wait on it.
Yeah.
Um, so he, he seemed, just from the email communication, it seemed like he felt confident that they'd have something by mid-January, it's like, great, if you have someone, great, but. Um, wait, so we're not going to wait for that.
Okay, okay.
And I'll let him know that it shouldn't be something that they need to push through Christmas, it's not.
Yeah, or try and be like, because they were talking about special meetings, I mean, you know, so it's like, well, Arthur Ryan, see if he's gonna have time in corporate.
Yes.
If he isn't, there's no sense in jumping through hoops.
I don't think we need to rush it.
Yes, so. I, I know, I mean, I apologize for missing the first part of this, but I'm picking up on the last part of what you said. Um, the, the criteria, it doesn't match the view, which is though, that's the definition scenic view.
Right, right.
Um, so, um. How, how many sites did you say there were, seventeen, twenty-one?
Eighteen, eighteen scenic corridors and six scenic vistas.
Okay, so if you go out and you look at it, it's a scenic view. Then use that other stuff to rank it from there, if, if you go out to look at something and it's not a scenic view, scratch it out of the list.
I, I think the only reason is that we went the other way on it was that to make it defensible. If somebody says, well, why is that a scenic view, you could go back and say, well, here's the criteria we, we analyzed, and that's how we rank it. But, uh.
But clearly that didn't work.
Well, that's what I was going to say, but if, but if your criteria is bogus, then.
Right.
Well, see, you have to take that criteria, you have to assign. A scoring system.
Way into the criteria.
Yes, you just can't say it doesn't have water, yes, you check the box, you have to take it to the next level.
Right.
And do one through five, is it really wonderful, or is it really only one?
Right.
And then if you add up the numbers, it's going to cut out. Yeah, I, and, and I would be surprised after you're done with all this, if you came up with five or six that are going to be considered scenic views out of that, maybe.
Right.
Which if you go out and you look at them and they look like scenic views, you're, you're already got your starting point, that's probably eighty percent of.
But you have to make them defensible, that's.
I, I agree, I agree, you have to make, but, but, but you can eliminate, you got a list of seventeen.
Right.
I agree, you probably, maybe you're somewhere between five and ten.
Yeah.
You know, reasonably.
And there will be explained, probably would happen anyway.
E- exactly, but, 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 but if you look at it, and it, it's not a scenic view, draw a line through it, you're done with it. Yeah, but you want to just, but I think what Howard's point is, if someone says, oh, that really should be a scenic view, then you can say, well, we did look at it.
Right.
And then we did rank it, and here's the ranking compared to everything else, and now everything else is perfect. So you gotta, you know, something's got to fall out of the bottle there.
That makes sense.
Because it has to be defensive, so.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, your point of just ranking each of those criteria on one to five, you got to build maybe a much clearer picture.
And then sometimes you have to say, we have too many scenic views, and you have to raise the bar.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, you're, you're ranking also, it has to come with definition, do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, one means this. Is zero.
This is the best view, you know, for the most people, you know.
Wow.
But that's the other thing, when we put these together, people came up with a view, and one person put it down because they thought it was a scenic view. Maybe nobody else agreed with them, but I mean, that, that again, we have to weed that down.
Well, it sounds like you have lots of work to do on that.
Yeah, yeah.
My only reason for asking that was if you were close.
Right.
Then we would include it, you're not close, so. But, sorry, I didn't make that.
That's fine.
Because we have to go with the definition, yeah, randomly go out and say, your, your five views go with it, so.
Okay, good.
And you definitely, yeah, I agree, wholeheartedly, you need to have a background, so. We have other data, if it comes down to it.
So anyway, this is all information that, that's been in there, um, and it still needs to be formatted a little bit, but, um. It cleaned up the other chapter, I think to make the other chapter a little bit more useful, it's not like you're scrolling through forty pages to try and get to the information.
Easier access to things.
Yeah.
Um, so now that, uh, Mike, thanks for joining, that's because it makes it possible for me to run upstairs to the budget committee, which I have to run out to at six o'clock. Um. Moving on to, um, item number ten.
Wait a minute, what do we want to do with nine? Do we want, um, we want Brian to say it's close enough to, to let the select board look at it, so we can take the next step?
So we, the select board saw the natural scenic historic resources chapter when this was all incorporated in there. I can tell them that we pulled some of it out, I don't know if we need to present the whole thing.
I think there's something, generalized statement of our progress update you can give them.
Yeah.
That you get organizational.
Mm-hmm.
Adjustments.
And I can say that if they want to see it, I can come back with, with the information, but I don't want to go to the next meeting with. Six or seven chapters full length typed out, given to them, because they're not going to look at seven.
It's a great way to do things, pass through them.
Maybe.
Maybe. All right.
Um. So moving on to item number ten, uh, where the rest of the night's going to be spent very easily. Um. Before I have to bow out, Brian and I had a conversation of things, uh, so he's kind of up to speed where I was on stuff. Um, so, it's the childcare was the big thing, that, that whole paragraph in there, just finding a good spot for that, still.
Still in.
It still is on this one?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. That was my big kind of thing there, and then, um, the generalized cleaning up of the policies and goals. On all of this, which is going to require a lot of everything on there, but Brian, this is your baby. So I'm going to hand that off to you, and I'm also going to hand the chair off to you, if that's okay?
Okay.
And, um, after I'm done up with the BAC, I will be back down here.
Thanks, Joe, don't have too much fun. Uh, Brian, do you want to just do it, since you made. So you and I had a conversation last week about the changes, so why don't you just, uh, and I was pretty much all in agreement with. What we discussed and looking at this, so why don't you run us through this so we all understand?
Mm-hmm, well, so.
What you've done.
Broadly, um. I've taken the, the list of recommendations and policies and goals and things that were all at the end. Um, and basically dragged them all up to the second. Um and basically dragged them all up to the section that they're related to. And then went through and uh there was some, you know, it it was talked about in the in the text of the paragraph. And then it was repeated as a recommendation or something like that, so I went through and sorted through all of those and. Made some judgment calls, you can see all the things that I either said I think we should not include this or things that um. Uh so when we're looking at the goals and the action items, anything black is something that um. Brian had included in the list and I just left it as it is, um if it's green, I came up with it, it's new. Um and if it's red, I think it's most likely something that Brian had in there that I um removed in the in the process. So beyond the goal stuff, I did go through and do some more wordsmithing, um. Adjusted some things that we had talked about in the meeting. Um and each section's a little bit different in the way that it's organized, so why don't we just start with the water supply? Um. There are two parts to the water supply section, um present conditions and future planning. Um so present conditions, where she's sort of describing what we have, um and how it came to be. And future planning is more, um what do we need to do, what's the general trajectory of things and um. And I'm actually gonna meet with Wendy Smith, who's on the Prudential Committee, um. To go over just sort of get then get a pulse on what they, how the Scotty Water District sees their priorities.
So does that sort of take care of your comment on forty-four there, um what does the district? What needs did the district have?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to hear from them, what you know, what conversations are they having at the Prudential Committee, are they talking? Because I heard generally that it's about stabilize the system before thinking about growth and expansion in that. So I wanted to hear from them, where are they in terms of stabilizing the system? Is that still sort of the general framework that they're using, and I wanted to include that, so. I'll uh I'll reflect whatever we talk about um in here, but so that's sort of how I. Reorganized what we have, um and in the present conditions. We had talked, okay, so I don't know if we've talked since, um we had talked about going, um. When I did the Health and Human Services chapter, I couldn't figure out how to make that useful and. Thought it would be more useful to have a municipal services chapter, so we have the utilities, facilities in this one, then we have the service end of it in the other. After trying to make that work, it doesn't work, and I just included the utilities, facilities and the services and everything that it it's all in this chapter. Um but I think with the the formatting and redoing the goals and everything, it's still, it's it's definitely the longer chapter, but I think it's still. A pretty manageable length, um and it'll get shorter with the with the clean copy and all the. Um struck and stuff taken out. So um.
So before you, where where are you at, where are you headed now?
Well, I was gonna just say that um the first paragraph is the service itself, and then the second paragraph is the facilities.
Okay. Fascinating, yeah, I I've read this section and what I don't see here in present conditions. It uh and maybe it's mentioned later, because I haven't gotten there yet, um yeah, is it brought up somewhere that we're in the middle of a upgrade on this?
Upgrade on the water system?
That water system, we just got a one and a half million dollar uh. Uh grant, uh up upgrade that system.
No, so it's not mentioned, um so.
And it should it be, I wasn't worried about. Oh, yeah, that's cool news.
It probably should be, and I'm hoping those are the kind of things that come up.
I think, so that just hit the streets.
Um. No, we we got the award quite a while ago.
Uh when I talked to the person who gave you the information, they didn't mention anything about that.
Brandon?
Yep. Because when I asked him about this, because I sent this to him, I had questions about the water district, you know, we're back and forth.
He's pretty busy and stressed, if you, yeah, he might not have considered that that was something immediately necessary.
But I think it's pretty important.
I do as well, yeah, no, we 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 applied for a gold, we're gonna have the million grand, we have to be in here.
Yeah, and so when I meet with Wendy, I think she she's a little bit more um of the pulse of.
See, I never, I was gonna run upstairs and bother Brandon real quick, so you know, yeah, that's all right, but we catch him before he leaves, maybe.
Um.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
So.
That's really good news, because that solves hopefully a lot of the challenges in there.
Yeah, and it's a little less speculation from our end, and we'll just have what what they're actually doing. Um, so you can see I added that goal, just because I think it had come up for me. I I had talked to Wendy about this a while ago, um.
You could put that right there, future planning currently, currently get a grant application, upgrades. You know, and and fill it all in right there, future planning, wow, that's a good place to start.
Yeah.
I I don't know how long that project will take, it probably take.
Wow, it takes years.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
I I I took to the best of my knowledge, it's all new water lines, bigger ones, and everybody's getting a meter.
Yeah.
Or better the worse.
So the next section is wastewater, um I have. The same thing, present conditions and future planning, this one is just municipal facilities, we don't have a service. Uh or any sort of body that that oversees it, um. I think it's pretty concise, um. But frames frames the discussion that we're having. Um, again, I think the goals and actions are the most important aspect to this.
I think having that uh illustration in there. You know, it because it explains to people what what that really means, because if you say community septic. Nobody really understands what that is. And in talking to uh the state, I spoke to the woman. That enforces and issues all the permits and everything, and I explained to her what we were trying to do and what we were worried the plan. And she said that they they are really pushing this sort of community group septic and approvals and things like that. And it seems to be a big issue, a big hot button for them.
Yeah, and this becomes relevant for like new subdivisions and things like that?
Not even retrofit.
If there's a cluster of things that have failed.
Yeah, like say the village of Perkinsville, well, if there's an available piece of land that the town owns, which they do, and if there's a group of residents with fails. Getting a simple gravity system, or maybe with one or two lift stations is is pretty cost effective. Because Mike, you brought up it a couple of meetings ago. If my septic fails and I'm on a hundred by one fifty lot and you're next door and your well is within fifty feet of my septic. Well, we got a problem, because it doesn't meet the two hundred foot setback, so when I spoke to the enforcement person there, she says, well, what you have to do is. That the septic designer will apply for a variance to the state. To allow their their rehab of that system, because they gotta give you a system. They don't wanna do, they prefer if you did as community group, but in the intro, they don't have that solution, that's what they do, they you parker variance. And they say, yes, and that may mean that the person doing the septic may need to pay to upgrade your well. Like a different casing or something like that, depending on how old the wells.
Now, do they support the community septic system, or are they just sort of investing?
Oh, they support it.
Okay.
And in the case of if it was the septic system that failed. And they were worried about it contaminating the well, they could force them into a uh a different type of system, a health testing system or something.
Yeah, but she said even that would, because setbacks for that could be reduced, but there may be a situation where. Well, like, yeah, the the well could be just over the property line and there's just no room to do it. It's gotta go back where it was, essentially, and so, because you brought that up, and when I spoke to her, I asked her about that because.
Yep.
Not a new piece of stuff, so anyway.
Uh I do, I got a question on just to for clarity, um um.
This, uh we just lost Zoom, I think the they just grabbed it, we only have one account. Um just since we were signed out, because your account is signed in by another device.
What happens if you try to sign in again?
Probably take it back from them, maybe?
Should I say something, no?
Um, well, I don't know what the solution is, since we we run into this with the the select board and development review board sometimes. Um.
But did we have any people signed on?
No, there was nobody in our room.
There's nobody in our room, so it's just us.
No.
Just us, that's the three happy people plus Ryan.
So do you do you wanna s- sign back in or let them go or?
If it's just us, then um, do we have, or do we have a way to record still?
Um, I think Joe was recording, but he must have taken his stuff, um.
That's the only thing that would matter, so we make sure we get the minutes, are we uh recorded on the uh on the screen there with the owl?
Yeah, we're up, we're just not, uh, we're not in a meeting. Yeah, interesting, actually. Um. It says we're still recording, did that just pop back up? I don't know. I guess we'll just.
Since it's recording, right?
I guess we'll just keep going.
Okay. So Mike, you have you have a point for a question?
I do. But I have another point before we get there, and that is that we probably ought to have. Some record of minutes or somehow, some some sort of something that that we know for sure we got.
Well, I can do this, I can.
Because we're gonna have, we're gonna have to do minutes.
Yeah.
Hang on, let me just. We can do this, it's just been a little bit.
My question is a word question, it it it's just something, just I just don't know what it means, so it's, it may be fine. It's line one thirty-seven. Okay, we're recording. Um, so. So my question, line one thirty-seven, it starts on the previous one, it says the wastewater end, what does the wastewater end mean? And I I I think I know what it means, but.
Yeah, um I guess I mean the end of the water cycle, rather than the input, it's easier to work on the output.
Um. Should we do something a little more just to make that clear?
Yeah, especially the output.
Yeah.
Super rocks and.
Um.
Well, the output side is usually uh some sort of processing, right, whether it's a leach field or a processing or something. I I I I I thought that's what you meant, was the end, the end point, maybe you just say the end point.
Well, I like to say the wastewater system is the simpler option from a construction maintenance perspective, rather than the.
You're talking about the actual system.
You're right, yeah, we're saying that wastewater is easier than water supply.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll clarify that.
Okay.
Planning?
Planning.
Yes.
Project committee?
Upstairs, that way.
How are you, Zell? How are you, Neil?
I got my snow shovel in place.
Mine too, I brought the.
I know, we started with, geez, I had somebody nude plowed last year, it's like, oh, what's that guy's name, do you think he's coming together? So I hope some people ask me, I wonder, we'll see. Happy day.
Um.
So it's just wordsmith that.
Yeah, I'll do that.
I knew what you meant, but it was sort of.
Yeah.
Need a little. Somebody revision six on this, so let that.
Yeah, but that's a new paragraph, that's the.
Yeah, but that's.
The initial brain done, you just sort of put it out.
I mean, it doesn't have to come back for that, you know what, you'll put something in there, it's fine.
Yeah. Um, what about, what about uh the actions and goals?
Or goals and actions?
Yeah, I uh basically left all of them, there's two that I removed, um. I removed promote equitable infrastructure planning across, I think just that was just a little bit too vague. And we have a long list of actions and stuff, so.
Yeah, I think the two utilities are are perfectly fine. Yeah.
Um store water drainage, same thing, I brought up those goals and actions and I just retained the one. Um. We just added it, it was retained.
Yeah, okay, uh it's the town plan, it's it's okay. I'm reading the storm drainage thing, and I know that we're having an issue with that, where where the DRB is requiring. Uh storm water runoff engineering in a subdivision. Uh we never did that. We 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 just. Put the note on the plaque that you had to follow the. There was a handbook that guided that that had all the rules and stuff in there, and we we put that on there and said that 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 had to be followed during development. During the subdivision, it's not not always necessary, subdivision may or may not even have a road, what are you gonna make them put in a, you hire an engineer, that's a cost burden. And and it delays the project, it 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 just, it's it's not, it's not healthy for the process. Uh I agree with it, but you know, we, because it exists, I think there's, I think to somewhat, there's statutes of law that that you have to follow. But that's in that handbook, and all you gotta do is attach that to the plaque and say, you gotta follow this book when you start your development.
Yeah, so it's not addressed here, but somewhere in the town plan, it talks about updating our bylaws and subdivision regulations.
Says it right there.
Okay.
It does, I I read that, which that's why I said, I think it's good, which we shall in mind. Yeah, um I'm on um would be uh five point three point one sort of drainage goals and actions, you got the goal and the action, it's it's all there.
Right.
Okay, it's all good, I I I I like it, it's the town plan. So it's good, but but I I do think we need to clarify that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think, Mike, we're then may have started years ago, conservation commission, what look at these things and say, it's fine, we're done, and. If we disagreed with it, then the words we're using is we're denying the project. And uh this is before Brandon, so last town mayor. Uh made the comment that conservation commission being a non-regulatory board shouldn't be put in a position. Of critically reviewing something like that from an engineering standpoint, though, the case we had, that guy was building a pond. He was building a big dam to create ponds, and then they were asking me, you were new conservation, because it said. We're not engineers, we don't know if that's gonna hold or the dam's gonna blow out, so he said in situations like that. The illness is on the developer to show us that it will. I think that's the whole thing about engineering, where if you came from, there was a lot of things that you said, or driveway drainage. Probably not necessary unless it's a real steep grade.
Well, I I think one of the other things that's that's in there that that comes to my mind is when you go in to. Develop the property, this is, I I know that subdivisions aren't considered development. Um but that's all on paper for the most part, okay, it's not on the ground. When you go to the ground and use bringing a bulldozer and a chainsaw, um. If if there's water down below you, you've got to, if that handbook has rules for you that you gotta follow.
Yeah.
And I don't think that we that that we need to force people, hire engineers to to go out and. Plan some elaborate drainage scheme. That that may or may not even be used. Right, and 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 or may not be used by the time that comes time to use it, it's totally changed, maybe either it exists or it don't exist. Anymore, you know?
So how do you how do you weigh that, though, how do you balance that?
It's not here, this is good for the town plan.
Yeah.
This this.
You're talking about the next step.
Um, like I said, with this, the planning commission, we always just on the. We on on the plaque, we put it on the plaque, that they had to use that handbook to guide the developer.
So I'm I'm sorry, I'm missing what your point is, Mike.
And this is about storm.
Right, so all that, and I and I agree with the the changes, but I was missing the whole other part of that.
Well, stormwater drainage, it it it, when you go out and you start cutting down trees and and bulldozing the property and you have a storm. There's nothing left anymore to control the water in natural course, so the handbook. Lays out for you what you need to do, you you've got to, you've got to set a perimeter drain.
Right.
On on the low edge to make sure that that water is controlled.
I'm sorry, I just took me a moment there, I was reading and you were talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Caught up here.
So but 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 again, I don't I don't think something like that needs to be engineered, if you forced on somebody with an engineer.
But what's in here is.
This is, this is fine, this is great, thank you, yeah. This is perfect.
Same, we'll review and update the regulations.
That's what I'm saying, but it's it's later on.
I thought you were talking about adding other things to it.
Yeah, right, the general principles that we're trying to.
Okay, thank you.
Improve efficiency, perfectly.
It looks like we're also that kind, right?
Yes, yeah, I don't know what happened.
Uh um but I'm also recording this as a backup.
Might not be a bad idea.
Okay.
Um.
Sorry, Mike, I just.
No, you're fine.
Okay, so electric utilities, nothing changed there, brought up those goals, um same thing, I kept those. Um, same thing, I kept those a little bit, struck a couple of them.
Um, on two sixty nine.
Mm hmm.
You asked, you had a note here, underground transmission lines, a thing.
Yeah, are are there really long distance power corridors that do it all underground?
What I I wrote, uh basically just to rewrite that sentence, I just said purge underground installations of new or upgraded electrical service. From a utility pool to an individual home business.
Okay.
Because if you're talking distribution lines, you're no way to know, you're never gonna put those on the ground, cost feasibly.
Yeah.
Transmission or distribution lines.
Right.
And I think the original purpose of the statement was exactly.
Right from the house, yeah.
But I wanted to ask Brian, is is that a thing that they're doing, like? Us having it in the town plan is not gonna tell them, go, actually, we want it buried, that's never.
I mean, it is, it has been done, it's, as Howard says, it's beyond cost prohibitive.
Right, yeah.
It's like crazy money, but I have seen it done in certain areas.
Mm hmm, but that's not something that we necessarily would call out.
We don't wanna try.
We wanting her, that's.
No, no, that we should do what Howard um just suggested.
Okay.
Do you know what the interstate looks like? Wouldn't you drive down the interstate in Vermont? It's all lined with rocks.
Yeah, I've seen.
Can you imagine trying to put a?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've solved that one.
Yeah.
They shut the door, but we must have been too loud. Our eyes must have been too loud.
Um wireless communications, that's more wordsmithing, um.
So three twenty two should just be struck, that was a note to myself, somehow it cracked in there.
Well, I didn't wanna delete it, cause I wanted, uh.
Yeah, that was a random, that was a note when I was back and forth with Annette Smith.
Uh huh, yeah.
That's where that came from.
Okay, it's just no longer relevant.
Well, I. Because she and I were having a discussion about goals and things and I, and that does not belong in there.
Okay, but as far as implementation strategies, did you, um. Is there something that we, that im- implementing what exactly, the the regulation?
Part of a, I guess, the regulation was just, that was the initial discussion.
Yeah.
When I first called her and said, hey, we need to fix this.
Yeah.
And what implementation strategy should we be looking at, and that's how, and somehow this crap back in here, and the word not given, I don't know how. Okay.
Um, and I just highlighted that chapter twelve in blue to remind me to check that that's, that holds true, it's gonna stay in chapter twelve. Looks like I deleted a bunch of them. Um, okay, so the next section is where I kinda integrated some of those town services. Um, that I wanted to discuss in a separate chapter, but didn't make sense, so, um. As part, so there's this primary section, town office and services, and then there's uh uh, the next section is. Um, what is it called? Other town facilities and services. Um, I'm not sure if those titles are the best, but um, these are all sort of the, um. I don't know, town government proper, the stuff that happens in this building, um, and those services. And this was created largely through uh chat G P T prompts and changes and stuff like that.
Do you find that works for pretty well?
Um, not a lot, but this one is, it seemed to, just because. What a town clerk does is pretty standardized.
Man, cause I've tried it and it gets really wonky.
It helped me just produce. After having spent so many hours and stuff looking, I was like, am I gonna sit down and write a new paragraph and? You know, I gotta do all the research, it definitely cut the time down and then if there's things we wanna change, then we can change them, and I went through it, you know? Um, I didn't just take it as it was.
This is a really dumb one or a lame one, maybe lame, it's not dumb, it's lame, but it might be damn dumb and lame.
Okay.
Um, five thirteen, the transfer station, it's just, it's just the title, the headline. We'll get that on the same page with with the with the next paragraph somehow.
Yeah, that's literally like blast it.
That's, that's.
Cause everything changes.
Like I said, it's dumb.
Yeah.
Um, I I like the stuff about the town services, I just wonder how much of that really is relevant in the town plan.
That is my question, um, I I wondered. It, so the town plan is a reference document, right?
And a guide to tell our leaders what real our goals are and how we wanna see our services improve.
So does that mean that? They need to know about the town clerk?
Um.
I mean, you must have had a reason for including that, I've been, I was wondering why you did that.
Just because it's a major aspect of what the town is, and this is a plan for our government. And this is a service that I think is often overlooked, people don't really think about. The town clerk as a service that we're all contribute, like it's obvious to see that when we're paying into uh the highway department, we see that product and we see them out working and stuff like that. Um, but I think the town clerk is just as important and um. I I think deserves some recognition, but also they have goals and, you know, we we should be planning for their succession and, you know, what needs do they have? What types of services are they providing, are they not, you know, meeting their mark? Do they need more, the the concrete examples, do they need more storage space, and they do. Um, so it's good to say, because they're gonna be applying for grants for for things like that, if they need a new humidity controls or something like that.
It's not in the town plan.
Right.
They can't get the grant.
Well, not necessarily, but at least it shows that we're thinking about them, and um hopefully, hopefully this documents get a guide, uh the capital plan that they're working on and.
I mean, I like the fact that you included it. I just was, and just when I read it, I went, oh, I was just surprised to see.
You you you, you know, a- as a board member. Um, there, the consideration for all of this is certainly always part of the budget. That we deal with.
Yeah.
And and all, and and their grants and all of those things. Um, so I I really only see this being a service to the people that are gonna read this book. And.
You know, like a service to the the employee.
We have no problem with it staying in, I think if the board wants it or doesn't want it, they can say.
Mm hmm.
Well, they, it doesn't bother me, I think leave it here for now.
I think the really good reason for leaving it in, because I've heard time and time again, if you apply for a grant and it isn't the down bland.
Right.
They're like, it's not, forget it, guys.
Well, eh, this is just, this was just sort of a shot in the dark, I just threw some words out, it might just. Might serve as a placeholder so that down the road, they have a little bit more say in the development of this, and I, I think it's, we should run it by them and say. Is this true to your situation, is there anything else you would like us to include in it? It's one method of communicating between that department and the leaders.
So Floanne hasn't seen this?
No, I just put it together, threw it out, but yeah, so that that would be the next step, is show it to them, the listers.
Um, so, so, okay. If we're gonna open this, can't remember, here it comes, let me throw some worms at it.
Okay.
Well, I, and I've talked to Floanne about this, so she won't be shocked, and Julie will tell you where it came from, without you telling her, um. One of the conversations I've had with her recently, uh, has to do with the town clerk and the listers being in elected positions in this town. And not coming under the leadership of town manager, right, and. And and it it's, it can be a problem. Um, so.
It's usually most towns.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 all of those can be a point of positions, so, but what I'm getting at is just part of that discussion become part of this, if that's what you. Are the goals to stay where you are, are the goals to do something different, and it's a way to get feedback. You put it in here, people read it, and they're like, what the hell are you gonna do? What are you doing that for? Or, yeah, that's a great idea, whatever.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah.
Well, uh, like the listeners in particular, they're like, um, I think it would be good to. To have that accounted for and say, we have a a lack of staff power, um, this is the. We contract out the assessor services, um, it's one, one thing to sort of document the existing conditions, but also then to plan for the next ten years, what? What challenges are they running into that we can solve by planning ahead, um, so this is just the opportunity that.
All of these things are in the town reports. Every year.
Right, for the town meeting.
Yeah, right.
Which is, which is just them saying what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, but you got the budget, it talks about the lister's office, you couldn't stay.
I'm like I said, I'm not. I'm okay with it.
A couple of years ago, there was a lot of conversation about going from listers to a assessor. And what happened with that, I mean, it just kind of dried up and, um. In most towns, when they get larger, go with an assessor, because it's a professional that.
And you just said it, it's a hired. And uh, the the, it was budgetary, but, you know, Sven was the one who actually kicked that off.
Yeah.
And Sven at that time was part time as as a zoning administrator, and would have. Been full time as a zoning administrator and assessor.
But.
That was his, that was his plan, maybe you got a really good offer out there in Alaska, and boy, you win. Um, and budgetarily, it just, it it just never materialized, you know? So that's what happened there, you know?
I just wanted to, to recommend a.
But but yeah, right, cause it might not have fallen off if there was a recommendation to do some things, and so it might not even be go to the listers and say, what's the trouble? It it might be more from the select board or from the town manager to say, what direction should they be headed in, that we can codify it as an action?
Do we have a problem getting listers?
Um, I think on a volunteer, or not a volunteer, but an elected position, there wasn't, the ballot has only ever had, so, uh. In recent years, it's only been one person.
Cause there's three.
Seats.
Right, or one, are we down one?
We're down two.
Two, or we're down, so there's just one man.
But now it's, it's gone, I haven't.
Yeah, for a long time, um, so.
Yeah, okay.
It's a recognized shortfall and, you know, we could just not consider it, um, and assume it's being dealt with in other circles, but.
I think it'd be time to recommend the assessor again.
But if it's in the town plan, then the town will explore what the the, to balance the assessors, like.
Discuss the options, what they are.
We're making a to do list of things for the town to do, and it could be to study, to do a study on that.
Right?
Yeah.
Review it.
Right.
Whenever.
Cause then, even if nothing comes out of it, you can say that we accomplished this action on the, on the list.
Sounds good to me, statutorily, when it comes to the listers, I think there's only four ways that you can run that office. And there's, one of them is a lister's office, one's a lister assessor, one's an assessor, and I'm. I'm sure what the other is, if there is even is another one. Three or four ways, but statutorily, you have to be in one of those positions.
Right.
So.
So if we put it down as a to to do list item to review that.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Yeah, yeah, just.
The fourth one, I've shown way than a hired. You know, like on a contract basis, hired assessor.
Um. It it it, in fact, I think that's, you're right, I think one of them was contract services and one was to hire an assessor. Outright, and the other two with the the combo, either list over list or assessor combo. Um, so I, yeah, I think, I think it was four.
So the next section is really where uh this idea came from, because I was trying to do the health and human services. And all it really did was talk about general health and well being, and, you know, it was twelve pages of just sort of generic information about. Health, um, but it listed like the different hospitals and things like that, which I didn't. Feel really needed to be done in the town plan, but on the other hand, we have a lot of community services and things that people don't know about, and again, I'm not. Necessarily saying we should list them all out here, but um, one of the services that we pay to have our government. Do is to connect people with with those services, a lot of people, tons of people, I sit in the front office and tons of people come in and just tell Suzanne. An issue that they're having, as if this is just like, come in and defend your problems, but she always, you know, can connect people to these services that they probably don't know about. Cause they're not, you know, really heavily advertised, um, such as the food shelf or, um. Or or other state programs and things, um, they're sort of that that connection point. So I felt like that was a lot more relevant than where are the hospitals and how much walking should a person do, which is basically what that other chapter said.
I like your, the way you wrote the introduction to that. I thought that was nicely done.
What, why are you on, Brian?
I, it took four twenty four, I thought the way that was, we're trying to provide support to residents seeking assessment, this will give you the resources. I thought that was nicely done. So I see that on the end when people show up at the food shops, you know, they're here first, and they end up over there, and I still don't. Understand that if you call two one one, you, there's a hole that goes on and on and on from there and.
Looking pretty good, gentlemen.
So anyway, that section is sort of town office related, and then these other, the next section is all of those. Town facilities and services.
Can we, can we come up with another title on five point seven?
Yeah, we should.
Uh. Not sure, something just popped up on top of my head, but it's how I go.
Yeah. Well, I guess before I could change it from town office and services to town office services. And then these other ones are not town office, so it could be, um.
You could say, um. Well, that doesn't work either.
But yes, I I can rethink that. Yeah.
Just, just other services.
Yeah. And then 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 that, because what that does, that allows us to capture. The childcare thing in there, if we're gonna keep the childcare.
Other facilities and services, take town out of it.
Yeah, take the town out of them.
And 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 services and facilities, I think sounds better.
Okay.
Just flip the words, I don't know why, it just does to me. I think it's, I don't know, right, it's it's, it's a musician thing, I'm writing a song or something, I'm hating. And you totally nod it, right?
Yeah, okay. So in this case, I did not bring all the goals and action items up to the section. And then after a while, I realized that I needed to do that, uh, but it was getting late in the day, and if you pack it up, so. Um, I think that's the next step, is I'm gonna bring these up to their appropriate sections.
I I think it reads better that way.
Yeah.
Uh, when when you get to the goals, you get lost on where you are, you know, with the section they go to.
Right, at first I only had like six or seven, and I thought it was manageable, and then it just kept going, so.
Did, did you guys do transportation before I got here?
We did, we said, well, that was the worst section we've ever read.
I I, well, all I was gonna say about it is I had nothing to do with it.
It was about the clearest, I mean, first first draft ever, I think.
Yes. I I don't wanna distract us too much, but, um.
Yeah, we're like thumbs up on the whole thing.
Okay, uh, uh, the only reason I was going there was he, where you saw policies and stuff in there that he wrote in. He was saying those were just suggestions.
Okay.
So, that was up to us.
We were gonna say, instead of policies, we're gonna say, um, action items, or change the wording of that to make it just roll into the. I mean, I think the thing was well done.
He did, yeah, he did a great job.
Yeah.
This, this looks good too, by the way, I like, I, you know, we've wordsmithed this a little bit, but I don't think we've. This, this was, this is seven hundred, seven hundred lines?
We've just gone through it, but, you know.
Yeah, dude.
Um.
If I, we could go down to cemeteries, can we do that line?
Cemeteries.
To address your comment, I spoke to, I called Ken Bloom.
Yeah.
And uh, he called the cemetery board members and he said, what I had sent him from the old town plan was fine, and then I quizzed him about. Um, maintenance and things, and he said, hmm, it's what it is, is what it is, it's sort of the response I got from Ken on.
Okay, so that don't need too much discussion intervention?
No, I said, I, here's your chance, I said, if you want something different than this, please let us know, because you guys are really driving this section.
Yeah.
So he was like, no.
I got, I got a similar response, I had asked him about something separate, and also was like, hey, the town plan's happening, if you wanted to get in on it. Yeah.
And I actually saw him and talked to him in person about it a second time.
Okay.
And I still got the same sort of, well, I talked to the commissioners and everybody seems to think we're good, and I'm like, okay.
Well, we've got some great people on that commission through a. Well, we've got some great people on that commission to, oh, work keeping all our cemeteries in good shape.
Yeah.
My neighbor, you know, Bob Flora, he's constantly out dragging his motor all over town, moving all the sites.
And I can't believe that he does that.
And and fixing up the headstones and get money over here to fix the headstones.
I I can't believe that he does that, but anyway, I.
All right, so we'll leave that.
Yeah.
Did you guys do health and human services yet or is that not done?
That um is basically being eliminated. So we, yeah, we basically, there wasn't really any useful content in there, and so I wanted to build that out with more of the services type stuff. And then it just makes sense to separate it, so it's all contained in here.
Perfect.
And there's no statutory obligation for that.
That was my next question. Awesome.
Um, we're move recreation, added a couple of things, lots of goals. Um, and then down at the bottom. Those were all, uh. I guess I went through and dragged up the ones that were relevant as I went, so all these that are at the bottom, I uh. Didn't find a home for.
So where's childcare in this?
Um.
Sorry, I can't find it. I thought I read it earlier yesterday.
What did we do with childcare, um?
Does that go to economics?
Yeah, we talked about a couple of different things, um.
Let us mention their town, well, town services too, they talked about.
Oh, right. Um. I think it's under, um, so line four twenty-two, resident services, front desk. And then all of the childcare stuff, uh, it's mentioned, just the word childcare is mentioned, local services, uh. The town provides support to residents seeking access to municipal and community services, including programs for seniors residents that need local services such as. Food shop, aging place and childcare. Um, and then, uh, line four forty. And that goal and actions are all kind of related to childcare.
Yeah. Yeah, but we had a, a section on that talked about childcare. Oh, is in this and it's not here. The previous. Version.
Other than facilitating through bylaws, but they're. More easily established than most we have any real control over. Expanding in any way.
Well, I guess my whole point is it's part of the thing that Suzanne refers people to, most is through the facility. And it's it's in the town plan.
Yeah, that's why I was going to the town services section here.
But I just, we had a whole paragraph on it and it's. Missing here. And I didn't know what happened to it. I didn't want.
Let me, let me see if I can find it. It might have been something that I suggested removing. Before, there was a paragraph that I remember talking to Joe about for a little bit and. Um, trying to figure out where it belonged because it basically just listed, um.
And I know Joe had very strong feelings about keeping it in the town plan.
Here, safe, um. Safe, effective and affordable childcare. Let me see if I can find that. Um, yeah, it's just that I had suggested striking it and I accepted that change. Um, so that paragraph was. So that was something that we went over at the last meeting. Um, safe, effective and affordable childcare services are important for empowering parents and young children to work as well as. Providing e-early childcare education. The state of Vermont currently lists five registered childcare facilities. Um, and many childcare facilities also located in surrounding towns. Uh, residents also rely in from informal childcare as well as uh registered babysitting arrangements, childcare resource. And referral agency, uh, for Weathersfield and Springfield area, parent child. Center, which is located north Springfield. Um.
Sounds like all of that was incorporated in just different order and presentation. Uh, within the goals here.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I'm just not seeing that in the goals.
Um, line four forty.
Four forty.
Four forty through four sixty.
Four forty. Okay, sorry, yeah. I don't know why I missed that. Thank you, Mike.
It's alright.
I think that works.
Yeah, I I was keeping up with him while I read it after I read it a couple of times.
Well, I thought I read it and then I wouldn't find it.
Yeah, most of it's, it's, it's presented a little differently, but it's saying all the same stuff.
So then the other question I have is. Uh, if we go back to line three in the beginning. It says.
That's always. Give me a minute.
It it talks about statute and then it says the utility facility plan consisting of a map. We don't have a map.
Um. Okay, so we do, we have all the maps from when it was last adopted. Um, let me s-let me pull up that map and see if.
So that map needs to be in this chapter? Or maybe it could be in a.
They, yeah, well, they could be adopted, uh, by reference, I guess, like right now, our town plan. Didn't have the maps like in in line or anything. They're just sort of.
And then we put them in appendix.
Um, okay.
All right, I just wanna be sure we don't run afoul of this statute here because those guys are knuckleheads and. I don't wanna have a problem.
Yeah, which one is the utilities and facilities plan map? Um, public facilities utilities map, let's see what that shows. Um.
Cause that's a busy map.
It it honestly doesn't show all that much. It shows the transmission lines, it shows. The roads and some trails and some public property. Um. And then it's got a few symbols. It shows the town offices, the library, fire station. Current school site. Yeah, so I I think we have that map. I don't know, it probably needs to be updated a little bit, but um. It was all made by the regional commission, so we'll just. Um.
Use their latest version?
Yeah, we'll have to. We we haven't even really talked about maps other than the future and current land use map, um, but there's like ten. Or something that have to be updated.
It's okay.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll do that.
All right, um. Does anybody have any other comments on this chapter?
No, we both.
Ryan, do you have any? Other thoughts here? I mean, I think it's come a long, long ways.
Um.
Chapter that never seems to end.
Yeah, well, I, it's one of the most dense and I think most important chapters, um.
So do you think, Ryan, one more revision, we can get a clean copy out of this thing?
Yeah.
For the next meeting?
And I had made a clean copy just to see, it's kind of hard to see with all the different changes and stuff, um. Yeah, so I'll move those, those uh goals, um, and then all the other little changes and stuff, um. And then, yeah, I think that clean copy is.
Okay.
Yeah, right around the corner.
All right, so then Ryan, you had mentioned that you wanted to. Um, you had ready the, and another section that you thought we could review tonight if we had time and it looks like. We're doing great on time.
Mm-hmm.
Six forty-two.
I could show you education. Let me, um.
I don't, there's no one online there, I don't believe.
No, well, I don't know who signed in as Brandon, if that's actually Brandon.
No, that's just his computer, I think, isn't it?
Well, normally it doesn't show unless, um. Someone joined the meeting as Brandon. Usually that's how it shows up when I log in, but I haven't, so. Um. Perhaps someone upstairs. Something. Um. Okay.
Baby, resume to the. Simple little things like putting your socks on. Oh. Thinking of one, but. Trying to get.
You wanna share?
It did, well, I couldn't connect to the meeting, just spinning. There we go. Second Brandon.
Why is your money?
It's clone.
Uh, maybe I need to, uh. Participants. There we go. Okay. Education.
There isn't any. Short chapter.
So I.
I hope it didn't cost you much.
Um, I added a paragraph, it's real brief, so let me know if you want more added to it about the supervisory union.
Can you make the 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 type bigger?
Yeah, sometimes.
For uh, for guys with bad eyes here.
I think Brandon's upstairs messing with you.
Yeah, it seems like.
I think that's what's going on. I think he's messing with you.
It's not making our lives any easier.
Scroll, okay, um. In this, I took from the uh strategic action plan for the school district. Um, in twenty eighteen, the Windsor and West Windsor school districts were merged to form the Windsor Southeast Supervisory Union, the Unified Union School District. Governed by a single board of school directors. Representing of the communities of Heartland, Weathersfield, West Windsor, Windsor. This created a Windsor Southeast Supervisory Union Board, which is made up of three representatives per town. Who are also members of their local school or, it's my glitch out, it's like again.
There it goes again. He's messing with you.
I think it's my kid, says my connection is unstable. So anyway, that's all I I threw in there. Let people know that. It's a, everyone retains, each town retained their school board. And there are representatives from those school boards that go to the supervisory union for it.
The point was like, my sense is just like three or four people making a decision for the whole town, we don't have any input.
Yeah, they, the actual supervisory union budget is voted on by those three individuals from Weathersfield that sit on that supervisory union board. Uh, there's four towns.
Yes.
Right, in there?
Yeah.
So that's twelve people that are sitting on that board.
Right.
That are making, the twelve people for for four towns are the ones voting on the supervisory budget. That, I don't think that's right. I just.
So how do you fix that?
Um, in the past, it's been talk of a petition, but you gotta have all four towns do it.
Right, yeah, we just can't do ourselves, right?
Yeah.
So what do you want to do with the education chapter? I mean, it's, I mean, I read it a couple of months ago and.
Yeah, I don't think it needs much, so I added that, um, and if this connects and then you can see the other changes. Um, let me just scroll in and tell you what they are.
You wanna just read them to us?
Um, there was that paragraph about uh place-based learning, um.
Yeah.
That we wanted to retain, um.
So we was eliminated, but we still wanted to retain.
Right, and so we resolved to take out a couple of words and I changed it, so. It used to say, um, this form of experiential education involves taking children out of the classroom, replacing them in apprentice-style training programs. We took that portion of the sentence out, so now it reads, this form of experiential education involves apprenticeship-style training programs. That may be on farms, repair shops. Um, so that's what we had discussed in the meeting.
Because I always can, I I thought the reason we wanted that out of that, since we only go through. A through eight here. And there's really no.
I mean, the board wanted it all together. They didn't want anything about offsite. And all, and we wanted to retain it. But we wanted to, like you said, where it is, so it didn't sound like an apprenticeship program for five-year-olds, you know?
Right, right, okay.
And I think in the broader context, this doesn't make sense here. It's not related to the Weathersfield School.
Right, in the broader context.
And then so the other change that I made was.
It still applies to residents of Weathersfield who are in high school who may wanna. Experience an off-school learning opportunity.
Springfield has a, a, what what do they call that thing? A Howard Dean?
Yeah, that's a great place.
Yeah.
What's what's the formula? Howard Dean?
Tech school?
Tech, yeah, tech, yeah, that's a text, yeah, it's a great place.
Um, so we took that line out, taking the children out of the classroom. And then I changed the town of Weathersfield desires to enhance the cooperation between the Struck Weathersfield School and I changed it to school district. We're losing it again in a second, but those are, that's everything, uh. Oh, and then we struck the sentence about, says furthermore, Antioch University located in Keene offers a variety of undergraduate and graduate degrees.
Yeah, why is that there? Yeah, why is it there?
So that came out, um, I added the town force to the exam, list of examples. Um, for non-classroom resources.
It's gone, so, but you just keep going.
That's it, that's all the changes.
So anybody have any, any church? No, we, no, we asked for all those changes, so we're good to have Brian format that and at the appropriate time. Present it to the select board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's great. Um.
So that one, so education's ready.
So let's just recap, Ryan, so um, transportation's ready, correct?
Um, yeah, let me pull up.
I've got it right here. Uh, housing, economic development and transportation were the last three that we sent.
Right.
Um, and then we had utilities, facilities, health and human services and our municipal services, which we went through tonight, which we're not ready to send yet. No, but but and we have, but we have education and we're ready to send that.
That's correct.
Uh, make a motion, send education chapter to the select board.
We have a motion, you have a second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, two abs, two absentees.
Yeah, we're missing Joe and Hank.
So I think. At the next meeting, I'll uh, I'll see what Brandon thinks is reasonable for the number of chapters to present. Um, but we'll plan on transportation, housing, economic development. Um, and education.
All right, so do you want? Um. Someone to show up at that meeting, um, one of the members here, just to give you moral support on the eighth, if that's when you're gonna do this?
Um, yeah, I would say it's up to you. I think the utilities and facilities one, I'd like you there for, um. But. Um, yeah, I would say it's up to you, I think the utilities and facilities one, I'd like you there for, um, but.
Is 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 it necessary at this stage of the game? To, or 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 maybe that is exactly what we want, to make sure that, you know, questions get brought forward, but now, so to make changes.
I don't wanna go through, say, we're good utility section, and then we get fifty fifty changes that we have to make. I gotta make them now while it's still fresh.
Well, we're gonna have to. Let's say that started to happen. As as a member of this board and that board, I would, um. I would advocate very strongly that. That board needs to recognize that we do not have a town plan right now, and that's a problem.
And that would be my point, Mike.
And and that these, you know, you know, these changes could be documented and carried back to the planning commission. And and after this thing is adopted, we can immediately go to work on that chapter and and go through the process again, and just change that chapter as. You need it, I mean, I would, that was my thinking, and I wanted to talk to everyone tonight, we're missing Joe and Hank, but I was gonna.
I don't agree.
Yeah, but I just, but I think that should be on a purpose, when we go there and say, guys, look, you know, this is, we should have had this done when?
Well, it's the state, obviously, is.
It's gonna be a year ago, we're coming up on a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I think. The presenting it to them allows them to ask their obvious questions, you know, ahead of time, so that they are sort of familiar and they're more apt to back up. What's presented at the hearing rather than be like, yeah, we're also seeing it for the first time, we have the same questions as the public and say. They'll be more prepared to defend and say, yeah, we asked those questions, um, this isn't the first time.
Right.
I think that's really the the primary thing.
But but that's why I say at this point where we send it to them now, we're generally just giving it to them.
Yeah.
And 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 and. I'm not sure it's really a good time for them to be asking questions, here it is. You know, this is what we've done, the, you know, you know, there's quite a bit of changes, and you can do the whole presentation on that, and. Um, and and then kind of end with, um, we'd like you to take this, read it. If you have any questions, let us know, send it to Ryan, to the planning commission, and we'll address it. And so this way we can get our hearings scheduled and and get this thing on track to get it done. If you you'll, I'm sure lay out the timeline and explain that all to them. And and just, you know, we don't have to make the timeline, but it's close, you know, we should stick to it as close as possible, and so we can get this done.
Yeah, and work on any, because we already had a list of things we wanna change anyway.
Yes. Yeah, and but once we get it in place, we can come back and, you know, I mean, if there's one that's got a lot of changes, that would. To me be the priority, take that one, get it done, reset hearings for that, and and go. And and at that point, you can say, okay, we've got two other chapters that have these two little things, so now you've got three things in one hearing. And bang, you fixed it, you fixed it, and you and you can have that done within six months.
Right, or sooner, hopefully.
That might be a good line to keep, you know, if we have to fix it, we can have it done within six months. Uh, unless you give us, you know, three thousand fricking changes.
Well, I guess the wild part is, we don't know. What the public's gonna say, because we've had almost zero public input.
Well, and and that's where, you know, we say, okay, well, we'll see you during the next round.
But we also haven't, we also haven't had zero public exposure, it's not like we haven't put anything out, we're posting the meetings on the front porch forum now. We've held, you know, multiple in-person events.
On the front porch forum, it said town plan re-adoption.
Right, right.
Which I thought was a great, and the room is empty.
Mm-hmm.
It comes back to what I said at the hearings the last time, it's not our fault, you weren't there.
Yeah.
Okay.
All our meetings are, almost feel like if we show up there, and the people are saying, well, you gotta change this, you gotta change that, and says, hey, guys. We've been talking about this since last March, and we've had two or three people show up for the whole thing.
Right.
We've had the town meeting that had it had it had it won, we've had other, you've had plenty of opportunities here.
I'm gonna give you my best take on it. I'm gonna shut up at that point. I'm gonna be safe with them. Cause obviously, just people.
Well, that may be a good idea.
Hey, no, but. It's not fair to us of working this for six years.
I thought I was sticking up for it.
Yeah.
I'll I'll bring it, I'll bring it up too at the select board meeting, the process, and I think they'll probably be pretty sympathetic to, we wanna have a town planned out, but I don't think they'll be. And being that they're exposed to it ahead of time, as opposed to, here's the hearing, and, you know, everyone's sort of doing it. And they'll they'll all be on the same team and say, yeah, we wanna get this thing done.
I would have no problem standing up in the meeting saying, you know, I've been, we've been sitting here in a vacuum for months and months and months, we've had one, two, or three people show up. And tonight you're telling us, so.
Well, i- if we go back and read tea leaves a little bit, um, if we look at the childcare, uh, interim by law. Uh, DeForest was not a board member at that point in time.
Right.
DeForest was very much in favor of passing that bylaw.
Yeah.
Be- because she read, she knows zoning, and she recognized the need for that to happen, and that what we did was the right thing to do.
And we did it.
And we did it, but but the select board was having some struggles with. And I, we got it through.
But you know why, I think partly was because how many interim bylaws has the select board seen, the recent select board? One.
Yeah, one.
Well, well, they were challenging our, uh, number one, our authority, our decision, and our recommendation.
Right.
I shouldn't say that, it wasn't all of them, it was only, it was pretty much only one.
Right, but it's clear statutorily, we were in the right.
Yes.
Yeah, we have the authority to do that.
We, no, we did the right thing. I I feel very confident we did the right thing, reading the tea leaves. Um. I I, DeForest's been around zoning long enough, been around town plans long enough to know exactly what we're saying is the real thing.
And the good news is, DeForest, with the exception of this evening, has listened to or has has been to almost all of our meetings.
And thank you for all of that, DeForest.
Yeah, I mean, but she's been, she's heard every word.
And because they're all, and I think they're all sort of on the same page, and they understand, you know, the. The need and to not hold up the process, and we can keep the to-do list going, I think everyone's on the same page, and that's why we're doing this sort of. Bring it to them, we're all working together and communicating as opposed to.
A lot of kudos for that too.
Right, as opposed to us doing stuff and then showing up at their doorstep and saying, here's all the stuff we've worked on without telling you for the last few years.
Okay. Alright, enough discussion about that, everybody's so satisfied, I'm gonna move on to number eleven, discussing, discussion item for future agendas. Ryan, what what's your chief feat say?
Okay, um, we need to do energy. Um, we're gonna have transportation on there again, um, just because we haven't really, uh.
That's just in case it comes back with any recommendations from.
Yeah, and and, right, and we had just talked about, um, changing the policies to goals and action items, stuff like that. So it'll come come up one more time, but it will have already gone to the select board.
The final copy is coming though.
Yeah, yeah, um, energy, we did education tonight. I think that's, that's basically all of them, so then it'll be more of a, uh.
Utility, we're gonna talk about.
So yeah, utilities, um. And then it'll just be sort of formatting, um. I'm gonna do kind of a master list of the, um, action items, so that that's sort of maybe an appendix, um. That's just sort of is a list of all the to-do items. Um. I made a note to set up time to talk to the regional commission's G S person, um, to just get all the other maps updated.
Yeah.
A work on an introduction and, um. Yeah, so kind of the. Further details at this point.
Alright, so then, um, you have the future agenda, and I guess the other thing we just wanna look at, because with the holidays coming up here, I know what happens. Our next meeting is scheduled for December fifteenth. Um, I'm available. I, when I spoke to Joe, he said he was available, but I don't know about the rest of the members.
I didn't think I was gonna be, but I found out today that I might be, um, I have surgery on the knife. Um, it it's it's. There's nothing there, why would they, what would they be doing there? Not just shove an acorn. Um, no, um, it gets, it's a fairly. Simple procedure, um, I was told originally that I was gonna be in bed for two to three weeks. And I was like, you gotta be freaking kidding me, I and I've been trying to figure this out for a year, how am I gonna sit still for three weeks?
About an hour.
I saw the doctor today, and he said, you're gonna be good to go back to work the next day.
Okay.
You're giving me some drugs, I was like, no, I'm not, you've dialed all those.
Yeah, so you're good for the fifteenth?
I should be, oh, it's okay, so that was, I have an infection or something like that, that was off my.
And Hank, uh, but at least we can.
Oh, Hank's buying pizza on fifteenth.
Is it?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, because we do have a active Monday in December. I hate to suggest the twenty ninth, I'm actually around, if we need to clean this thing up.
I I I'll be around, I'll be fine if we have to, if we have to.
If we have to, I certainly know.
I don't, I don't, I don't foresee it being useful.
Yeah.
I think we'll, we'll have the meeting on the fifteenth, and we'll kind of go over those last chapters, and then I'll need some time to basically put something together.
Alright.
Cause I think the meeting in January, um. I mean, best case scenario, I'll be able to provide you with a document with everything in all the chapters put together. Um, so if we have our, a productive meeting on the fifteenth, and then I'll have through New Year's to put.
Yeah.
Those sort of finishing, I don't think there's, there, I don't think I would have anything between the fifteenth and the twenty fourth. To produce and have a meeting about.
And then, uh.
Well, for the point of being, though, if it's necessary for some reason, we're available.
Yeah, I mean, but.
But I'm listening to you, I I.
I I just, I just, we, I feel like we're so close, and I didn't wanna say we needed to meet for an hour, I'd be willing to give up an hour just to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because our next meeting is gonna be the fifth of January, and then the nineteenth or second meeting, I'm gonna be out of the country, I'm gone. So, Venezuela? No. Olympia.
Yo.
Now, so the nineteenth, I'm gone, so, um.
Okay, so I think I'll try and have a complete document for the meeting on the fifth, and then everyone can, okay, and say, go ahead, we're in a hearing. That's the goal.
Okay, it sounds like a really good call. Uh, any questions on that, everybody's good?
That's scheduled, I I'm, uh, January fifth, I've started that one, this, no. January fifth, uh, full document, um, full doc, um, and, uh, select board. These are gonna be on the next, next week?
Yeah, I was gonna talk to Brandon about the eighth, yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
I I I, again, I I, I'm thinking for the select board, it doesn't have to be a big discussion night, because it's half an hour. Not if that.
Twenty minutes.
Do you think I should then write in all the chapters to include in the packet? Or should I just sort of provide a link and say, this is where you can find all the chapters, and we're not gonna go over each one individually, or?
Well, let me tell you what I tell him, I don't like big documents like that in my packet. Okay, cause it makes it really hard doing this all night long, trying to keep up.
Yeah.
Uh, he did it to us the last, and we had like a hundred and eighteen thirty pages. Yeah, I'm like, I I've told him. Uh, big documents like that, put them on the desk, print them out, put them on the desk, don't put them in there. You know, just put a title in there and placekeeper, so we we.
And a link for the public.
And, yes, yeah, a link for the public, I didn't say that, but. Anyway, um, so, yeah, um, big document like that. Um.
So I can, I can send him, I can put him on the website and put a link in there, so that in the packet, it's just a link, so that. You know, when you're reviewing the packet ahead of time, you can go and see all those things on your computer or whatever.
Yes, I think that's fine, and anybody that wants to read it can print it out. You know, um, the only thing I've seen with that. I don't really wanna say it on record, but.
No, I know what you're saying. Uh, but we went through that one night, we spent a half an hour sitting here in line, Ryan ran up and down the stairs, wanting to print for us.
Yeah.
Um, which is not who we should be dealing with.
Well. If I need to print something for my use, I'll do it, if 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 it's on here, I can do it at home, I've got paper, I'll tell it. It's just, it's just part of the job, it's not drive to the town office and have an employee do it for me. Right?
Yeah, I get it. Okay, so we're good with future agenda items, we're good on the schedule. And our game plan with the select board, it sounds like we're organized for that. Um, any, uh, number twelve, any other business that we can legally discuss this evening?
Just one question is related, but just beyond our purview, the. That, you know, that town plan that I gave you, that you know, from town, you used to work in order, DeForest was looking at that at one point. And really liked the fact that at the end of the town plan, was a page that assigned responsibility. For each of the items, or you said active items, this is the select, which is possibility, this is planning commission, this is conservation commission. So that people, you know, it's not just some superfluous document that gets put on the shelf, you're actually assigning responsibility. For those specific areas, and there's not gonna be any finger pointing.
Or at least, or or well, not only that, and letting everybody know who to go talk to, if there are any questions that have to do.
One-page matrix or something, but that's something that, I think we already include before we send the final copy to them, because I know they're looking for that.
Yeah, well, like I was saying with the appendix at the end, that just is just the goals and and action items, I think in that, I'll just, I can.
Okay.
Yeah, label that, who who's responsible for that action item.
Good.
I I think that's a great idea. Uh, any other items that we wanna discuss this evening, Mike, anything for you?
I was just gonna, um, make a motion for Hank to buy pizza, uh, on, on the fifteenth.
Alright, so I hear a motion on the floor, can I have your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Good.
Uh, would you let, would you let Hank know that he's bringing pizza? Um, if there's nothing else, Howard, you have.
I heard Joe say aye too.
It's up to me usually, uh. Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Aye. I'll second that, aye. Okay, great job, gentlemen, sorry, I was a little late.